Okay Jalal, we are live and you may begin whenever you're ready.
Should I do a three, two, one? Good evening, everybody. The day is Monday, March the 10th, 2025. And by looking at the number of board members present, I believe we have four. This is a special meeting of the Board of Directors and I called the meeting to order. This meeting, a special meeting was called by two board members, Director Flashman and Director Perry. The purpose of this special meeting is to discuss an agenda item on our land use advisory committee meeting of March 11, 2025, presentation on developing the Reston National Golf Course. Just as a reminder for everybody, we are not going to discuss the developer presentation even though it was included in the packet. Before I hand it over to Director Flashman and Perry, let me just say a few words to get us started. Our agenda is, as you see, you have it. And before we go through the agenda, from my perspective, just to share with you, when I ran for the board over a year ago, I was clear about my commitment to maintaining our golf courses and green spaces then. And I stand by that now. And we'll keep that commitment going into the future as a board member. I believe the board is unanimous on this position. And I want you to know that's the way we are, this board is, and obviously each member may speak to that as well as soon as they get a chance. So with those, let me just start the meeting. We have, we need to adopt our agenda for tonight's meeting.
I shall move.
Second.
A motion has been seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That is unanimous of all. Thank you very much. At this point, we are opening the special meeting to member comments. And as a reminder, each member will have three minutes to present their statements. And Brittany, I believe you will help me get members lined up so that we can manage them.
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
Okay.
And while Brittany is getting ready, I ask every member, well, would you, before you start, please state your name and your address. Thank you.
Just to confirm, members speaking on behalf of a specific group get five minutes.
Five minutes, correct. That is, that is correct.
You stole my thunder, Margaret.
Yeah.
That is correct. If you're speaking as an individual, you are allowed three minutes. If you are speaking on behalf of an RA group or committee, you are allowed five minutes, after which we will thank you for your time and we will move on to the next member who would like to make a comment.
Very good.
Okay. First up, I have Ms. De Souza. One second. Ms. De Souza, you've been asked to unmute.
Thank you, Brittany.
You're welcome.
Hi, everyone. I'm Sarah Salvage De Souza. I live at 2118 Green Watch Way, 301 Reston, Virginia. A lot of familiar faces. Good to see everyone this evening. Firstly, huge, huge thanks to Director Flashman and Director Perry for understanding the importance of this issue and calling the special board meeting. As mentioned in my letter to the board on March 7, I completely failed to understand why the RA Land Use Committee is offering the golf course owners a platform to share their development plans when Reston Association Board has taken a very vocal stance on this issue. A few excerpts from our own RA website under Who We Are. As the community steward, RA is responsible for maintaining the quality of life in Reston chiefly by caring for and administering the community's most precious asset, its real property. It goes on to say RA seeks to preserve property values in Reston through a system of covenants and restrictions that govern the design, maintenance, and use of property. And it further goes on to say RA seeks to protect Reston's natural beauty and environment. FYI, in addition to the many single-family homes surrounding the golf course, this development would directly impact property values of nearly 847 condos and townhomes that pay over $700,000 in RDUs annually. These units are some of the more affordably priced units in Reston. Several are owned by longtime Restonians who choose to age in place. When property values fall, it sets forth a motion of scary chain reaction. Property owners left with no equity, foreclosures because their home value is less than what is owed to the lender. RA in the past has successfully helped defend many such ill-conceived development proposals, the most recent being the casino. All by standing hand in hand with our neighbors in grassroots community action groups like Reston Citizens Association and Bestin Strong. This is once again time for RA to step up as a leader and join our neighbors as we defend our open space and property values. Lastly, if the board needs legal guidance, please, please pay for an outside land use attorney as we have done in the past to make unbiased and informed decisions. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. And next we have Ms. Connie Hartke. You've been asked to unmute.
Hi, thank you.
Please state your name and address, please.
I'm Connie Hartke, President of Rescue Reston, the grassroots volunteer community organization committed to defending Reston's two golf courses that have land use designations of private recreation use, more specifically to remain as 18-hole golf courses. I am requesting that the RA Board order the cancellation of Agenda Item F of the March 11th Land Use Advisory Committee Meeting. There are two key lessons learned in the initial battle for Reston National Golf Course during the years 2012 to 2016. First was RA's legal standing is only in regard to the Reston Association pathways which create a right-of-way through the golf course. Reston Association has no legal standing to defend the homeowners or clusters adjacent to the course. This was a surprise to all of us back then, but it is fact and that fact remains. RA stood with the county and its members with support, but legal assistance was not possible. This, other than support, this initial battle to rezone the Reston National Golf Course came to an end on Friday, March 4, 2016, after attorneys for the then-owner of Reston National filed a letter with the Supreme Court of Virginia indicating they would not pursue an appeal. They had no winning case. Now, the current owners come in with the same law firm that started this unprecedented attack on Reston's open space in 2012 and threaten again that they have found a way to claim by right development. Just as in that initial development, we the people have important supporting roles, but it is the county who has the lead role. As part of the standard county screening process for SSPA site-specific plan amendment nominations, the county will be scheduling a public meeting this spring on this nomination. Agenda Item F would give attorneys Amanda Williams and Mark Looney of the Cooley Law Firm an additional and unnecessary opportunity to present their clients' proposed development of Reston National Golf Course to the public. They have two proposals and both are counter to the County Conference of Plan for Reston and to the intent of RA's Land Use Resolution 6 and counter to the public statements by RA Board members, including one sitting on the current board. One proposal is worse than the other and it almost seems as though an opportunity is being set up to threaten Reston. Give us bad option A, or we will claim that we have the right to proceed with worse option B. We need to show up at the county public meeting, which will be scheduled this spring. Further actions needed by the community to defend against these efforts should be decided after we are informed at that county meeting. Reston Association should not be giving an audience to these proposals. Please vote to cancel Agenda Item F from the Land Use Advisory Committee Agenda. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. John Higgins. You've been asked to unmute.
I'm with you. Are you with me?
We can hear you.
Yes. Good. Thank you very much. I don't have prepared comments and I will not take three minutes. I won't say at the outset that I have great respect for the speakers we've already heard and many of the people I know who have taken a public position already on both any future development and even the issue of this week's meeting by the Land Use Committee. Having said that, if I'm to form any opinion at all, I need information. And it was not until I saw the Land Use Committee's agenda that I had seen for the first time the possible, I'll call them proposals, that the golf course owners want to put in front of us. I won't even take a position on whether I like them or don't like them, but I certainly take a position and I encourage this board to hear that we have a right to understand and learn about these issues that are so important to us. Waiting for the county's meeting before we begin that education process, I think is unwise. Spending, again, large amounts of money for outside counsel by the RA, not having learned the lesson from the land swap and the last golf course fiasco, I think is equally unwise. Please reconsider or consider carefully any spending on that issue. That's all I have to say. I know you've got a tough one tonight, but please vote in favor of more information for members rather than less. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Ms. Lisa White. You've been asked to unmute. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Lisa White. I'm at 2061 Weathersfield Court. I'm actually presenting a statement on behalf of Doug Britt. His address is 1569 Harper's Cove Lane, Reston. As a retired professional ecologist, Virginia master naturalist, member of RA's Environmental Advisory Committee, longtime Reston resident and previous RA Board Member, I'd like to underscore the environmental benefits that Reston derives from its existing golf courses. These comments reflect my personal and professional opinion and are not to be interpreted as an official position of the RA Environmental Advisory Committee. The golf courses provide both passive and active recreational opportunities to residents while enhancing habitat diversity and species richness for flora and fauna. They contain transition areas where different plant communities such as urban forest, grassland, meadow, and wetland intersect. Such transition areas support high biodiversity and offer conservation potential in what otherwise are ecologically simplified urban landscapes. More than 100 bird species have been observed from the two Reston Golf Courses and scores of mammals, reptiles, and amphibians can be found there. Reston National Golf Course, moreover, was recently recertified as meeting the requirements to be listed as a cooperative sanctuary golf course by Audubon International. In addition, proper turf management on golf courses builds healthy soil microbial communities and encourages large earthworm populations that create small spaces that oxygenate the soil and facilitate stormwater retention. More importantly, if we let them develop, I'm sorry, I'm going to have to abbreviate because I'm running out of time. If they develop these open spaces, then we're going to have more impervious surface area that will cause more runoff into all the lakes. We also have the possibility of new people using more de-icing agents, which would put more salt into the already troubled streams. I caution the RA Board of Directors not to buy into the scare tactics that some pro-development organizations have recently spread about the environmental threats represented by Reston's golf courses. Development of these precious open spaces would do a great deal more harm to the future of our community, including its residents', water quality, and native flora and fauna. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Bob Patraine, and I'd like to just make a comment to everyone in the chat this evening. If you've messaged me, I have received it. I will call on you in the order that you have raised your hand or sent a message that you'd like to speak.
Ready?
Ready.
Okay. My name is Bob Patraine. I live at 2503 Foxcroft Way. I am speaking tonight solely as a member of Reston Association and in no other capacity. I oppose the redevelopment of the Reston National Golf Course as proposed. The developers' claim of by-right development is contradicted by PRC zoning rules, prior legal decisions, and the site's designation in the comprehensive plan. First, it is inconsistent with the approved PRC development plan. The land was designated as open space and for golf course use in the original 1971 PRC Development Plan for Reston and all subsequent updates. PRC zoning requires that all development conform with approved PRC plan. Second, legal precedent and court rulings. A previous developer attempted to claim by-right residential use, but Fairfax County and the courts rejected that assertion. Nothing of substance in this current proposal changes that claim. A 2015 Fairfax County Circuit Court ruling invalidated a Board of Zoning Appeals decision that suggested residential development might be allowed. Third, no by-right residential development is allowed. PRC zoning does not operate like conventional zoning districts where landowners can build any use permitted by the property's designation in the zoning ordinance. The golf course land is designated as open space, not residential, meaning that housing cannot be built without rezoning or plan amendments. There is no reason to believe that the courts would view the owner's purchase as anything other than speculative. They purchased a golf course. The investors knew what the land was when they bought it. So they assumed that risk that it would remain so. There is no entitlement to a windfall through redevelopment. And fourth, Fairfax County's PRC density cap. PRC zoning imposes an overall cap of 13 persons per acre for Reston on which the open spaces of golf course has a material impact. If the cap is pierced by this or other proposed developments, the unique protections afforded by PRC zoning could be lost. In conclusion, Reston Association should cancel any presentation to its Land Use Advisory Committee. Such a presentation could convey that this proposed project has the support of the association in contravention of its existing resolutions, Land Use Resolutions 4, 5, and 6. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Next, we have Mr. Sean Ensley. You've been asked to unmute.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. My name is Sean Ensley. I live at 11400 Summer House Court in the Baldwin Grove Cluster. I have two comments for the board's consideration. First, the board should order the Land Use Advisory Committee, or LUAC, to remove from its agenda the presentation by the developer on the Reston National Golf Course SSPA scheduled for March 11, 2025. This presentation is contrary to this board's Resolution 6 golf policy dated December 15, 2016, which was reaffirmed in 2020. The board has established the association's policy and the LUAC has nothing to advise. Second, the board should determine the person or persons responsible for this LUAC agenda item. These persons or persons are either clearly ignorant of the board's stated policy or are willing to provide a forum to present circumstances contrary to the board's continuing policy. In either case, the person or persons responsible should be educated as to the policies and procedures of the RA Board to avoid needless controversies like this one. These person or persons should be held accountable by the board ultimately, which could include removal of those persons or persons responsible from the LUAC. Thank you for your time and willingness to listen.
Thank you. Next, we have Michelle Silver. You've been asked to unmute.
Yes, hi. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Michelle Silver and I live at 1816 Golf View Court. And I've been here for over 23 years now. I'm actually here representing the North Shore Cluster Home Association. And for those who may not be familiar, that is adjacent to the Hidden Creek Golf Course. I know we're not talking about Hidden Creek tonight, however, we here at North Shore have a vested interest with anything that transpires with Reston National as it pertains to development. Our community is perplexed as to why the RA Land Use Advisory Committee has agreed to meet with a developer who wants to, in our words, destroy Reston National Golf Course and it smacks in the face of the Reston Comprehensive Plan. It seems the members of the RA Land Use Advisory Committee, it's uninformed as to how the community feels about residential development on the golf courses. So I'm going to take a minute to enlighten everyone with the facts. Fact, Reston National and Hidden Creek Golf Courses are in the County Comprehensive Plan, spelled out by names and tax maps, at tax map numbers. And these golf courses are planned for private recreational use. More specifically, they are to remain golf courses. I assume you have the tax map numbers, but I can put them in the chat if you need me to later. The next fact is the respective golf course owners continue to nominate Reston National and Hidden Creek under the site-specific plan amendment process. The last time they did this, the owners at Reston National had open houses with the Reston community to discuss the possibility of developing residential units. It was not well-received. Moreover, there was a survey conducted where approximately 95% of the respondents said they do not want development on the golf courses. Thankfully, Supervisor Walter Alcorn continues to listen to his constituents, especially those who live adjacent to the golf courses. As a result, Supervisor Alcorn has not included either golf course in his list of nominations to move forward at the Fairfax County Board of Supervisor meetings. Thank you, Walter Alcorn. So I will ask again rhetorically, why has the RA Land Use Advisory Committee agreed to meet with a developer and build on some of the dwindling green space we have left in Reston? And again, it smacks in the face of the Reston Comprehensive Plan and ignores the negative outcry from Restonians. I ask that you cancel this meeting and any future meetings with any developers that want to build on either golf course. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And next, we have Lynn Mulston. One second here. You've been asked to unmute.
Thank you, Brittany. I appreciate it. Good evening. My name is Lynn Mulston and I live at 11472 Lynx Drive. As President of Reston Citizens Association, I am here tonight with a request and a question. First, my request on behalf of the Board of RCA is that RA's Land Use Advisory Committee refrain from giving an audience to the developers of Reston National. Despite the fact that Reston National is not RA covenanted land, this proposal goes against the Reston Comprehensive Plan. Let me share just a few examples. The plan introduction includes Reston's quote-unquote "two private 18-hole golf courses" this way. Harmoniously integrated wooded neighborhoods of variously priced and designed residences are clustered around four village centers, two private 18-hole golf courses, community and recreational facilities, four lakes, 55 miles of trails, and large interlinked public natural areas. The description for Parks, Recreation, and Open Space reads, "public parks, plazas, recreational space, lakes, ponds, stream valley areas, natural areas, private open space, golf courses," with a note that density for these areas has been transferred to other areas of Reston. Land use recommendations specifically state that golf courses are planned for private recreation use, more specifically to remain as golf courses. In addition to land use, the golf courses are referenced in numerous chapters throughout the comprehensive plan, including environmental stewardship. The existing Parks, Recreation, and Open Space System is recognized as one of the most outstanding features in Reston. It includes several large open spaces such as forests and stream conservation areas, lakes, stream valley parks, including the Reston Association Walker Nature Center, and two privately-owned 18-hole golf courses denoted as landmarks in the November 2018 Fairfax County Office of Revitalization Guidelines for Development Reston Transit Station areas. In 2014, then RCA President Shridhar Ganeshan wrote, "Just as in 2012, Reston organizations such as Reston Association, Rescue Reston, and RCA are aligned in their opposition to any potential rezoning of the land." Now, this proposed action of the Land Use Advisory Committee drives a wedge into the collaboration that RCA, Rescue Reston, and RA have enjoyed in defending Reston's golf courses in the past. This is where my question comes in. Is RA electing to remove itself from the relationship of unity and collaboration when it comes to Reston's two 18-hole golf courses? The answer to this question is extremely important. Today, development of the golf courses has been repeatedly rejected by our current Hunter Mill District Supervisor Walter Alcorn and by all of the communities that are adjacent to the courses. With Rescue Reston, RCA will strenuously fight any efforts to weaken this resolve. Will RA be at our side? That is another question. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And I sent another message to those of you in the chat. If you'd like to make a comment, please send me a message or raise your hand. If there are no other comments this evening, that will conclude. Oh, looks like there is one. Okay. This bits are... Give me one second. You've been asked to unmute.
Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Julie Bitzer. I live at 2020 Peppermint Court, Reston, Virginia. I am speaking from past experience as the RA Board President and a member of the Board from 2015 through 2021. So I can say I've basically lived through much of the attempts of the golf courses to change the nature of what they're at. But while I support most of what everyone has said thus far, so I won't repeat that, what I do not understand is that the Board is, in a sense, making work for yourself. This matter is premature and unwarranted in taking your energy and time of not only the Board members, the committee members, and that's not just of land use, but also of PRAC, of DRB, and EAC. And it's for a matter that is not yet baked, if you will. It is in the county's hands. This is a county matter that we, as Reston Homeowners Association, need to see if it ever gets baked, if it ever gets beyond the county and to a point where we need to take further actions. You've heard what the community feels about it. You've heard what others have said about it. We took, as the Board, a no-development position with Land Use Resolution Number 6. We've sent our comments and our affirmation to the county, to our district supervisor. I just don't understand, given all of the other things that you all have on your plate to do, that you are spending hours of energy and time on a topic that is, at this moment, premature and unwarranted for your attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else this evening who would like to make a comment? Please send me a message in the chat, or raise your hand using the React feature at the bottom of your screen. Mr. Pinkman. You've been asked to unmute.
Hello. My name is John Pinkman. I've been here a while. Developers have a way of saying, eliminating the concept of playing golf as a recreation. Very quickly, I'd like to inform the Board that currently at Westwood Country Club, which is in Vienna, there is a seven-year waiting list for membership. Doesn't sound like they're having a hard time attracting members, or profitability for that matter. That's my comment.
Thank you, Mr. Pinkman. If you could just state your address for the record, please.
Sure. I live on the first fairway of Reston National. 2188 Golf Course Drive.
Thank you. Okay, I don't see any additional hands raised. Oh, there's one more hand. So you have those who've been asked to unmute?
Hi, thank you. My name is Yavuz Ananli. My address is 11195 Square Sale Court, Reston, Virginia. And my comment, I think, is that I don't understand what's the harm in listening to what people want to say. I feel a lot of the comments they've been on the discussion on the merits of the golf course, and that's not what I think what we're talking about right now. We're talking about, should the Land Use Committee even hear them? And I don't think there's been comments to that. Most comments have not been to that effect. I do understand, I think, you know, there's always a question of priority and time, but the Land Use Committee has decided to listen to this, and then the Board itself can decide to defer or wait on action based on what the county says. But I think it sends a bad message as if a community representative were not willing to listen to ideas to better our community. We might not agree with them, but I feel like we should at least be willing to listen. And then if we say no, I feel like that would be even a more powerful message to our county leadership versus the idea of just denying the ability for people to present their ideas. And so that is my comment.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Charles Colby. You've been asked to unmute.
Hello. This is Charles Colby, Hunter's Green Cluster. My address is 11731 Indian Ridge Road, Reston. And I just wanted to say that our cluster thinks it's a bad idea to have this meeting tomorrow. I was to use an analogy here, or metaphor, it's as if someone wants to take your liver from you, and then you have a meeting with them to discuss how they're going to take it. You're giving the impression that we are endorsing the idea, and we are not, and you should not, based on your past resolutions. I'll also tell you that based on past experience with these folks giving their proposals in the tent meetings they had a few years ago, and in their last SSPA nomination, they only give vague, dreamy details. They're just trying to do a sales pitch to lull you, but they don't really have, in the past, have not offered much substance, so it's not worth talking to them anyway. So that's my viewpoint. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to make a member comment this evening? Please send me a message in the chat, or use the React feature to raise your hand on the lower bottom of your screen. Director Mappar, I don't see any additional hands raised.
Okay. On behalf of the Board, let me thank all the members who are present, and especially those who gave us their comments. Obviously, we'll keep those into consideration as we get into the discussion. I also want, before I go to the next topic on the agenda, I frankly really want to use this opportunity to encourage all those members present to please, please vote in the RA elections. As you all know, it's the month of March, so I encourage you, please vote, and please ask your friends, neighbors, network, et cetera, to make sure that they vote, and I appreciate that. Thank you very much. With that, we are ready for Agenda Item Number D. And at this point, Director Flashman and Perry, I'd like to hand it over to you to basically get us started on the conversation and any discussion briefing, opening remarks, and so on. Over to you guys.
Thank you. Margaret, if I may, go first. Thank you. I'd first like to thank all of the people who have spoken this evening, and I appreciate their having made those comments. They are, it is always good to hear from residents of Reston. And we have a lot more today than we have usually at our regular meetings. I would like to present a motion first, and then, once seconded, to proceed to discuss the motion. The motion is as follows. I move to instruct the Land Use Advisory Committee to cancel the March 11, 2025, presentation on Reston National Golf Course. I ask for a second.
Second.
I'd like to proceed with the discussion of the motion.
Point of order.
Yes?
Director, is that Director Santa?
Yep. Mr. President, is the maker of the motion, by doing this motion, asking to suspend the resolutions that govern the Land Use Committee?
No, I am asking to do exactly what I asked. I'd like to make the presentation first, and then if you want to ask questions, I'd be pleased to hear them.
Director Flash, yeah, Director Flashman. I, this is uncertain for me. Allow me to get our general counsel to just get a reading from it. Is Mr. Champ here with us? Mr. Champ, can you give us what say you?
I would think you would need to suspend Land Use Resolution 1 in this instant, as I think Irwin's motion has the same practical effect, but to clean it up, because this process was followed where a request for presentation was made. The CEO presented the request to present the informational presentation to the Land Use Committee, and the Land Use Committee put it on their resolution, or put that on their agenda, rather. So this followed our resolution. So in order to do what Irwin's talking about, I think, yes, you'd be suspending the resolution in this instance.
Thank you.
Thank you for the clarification. May I proceed? Mr. President, may I proceed?
Please do. Please proceed, yeah.
Okay.
I'm still calling point of order. I think that what we need to do now is, based on counsel, is Jalal, you need to rule on the point of order. And if the point of order is out of order, is ruled out of order, then the motion isn't valid, and someone would have to come up with a new motion. And counsel can confirm if that's the proper procedure.
Yep, let me get back. Counsel, can you help me out here on this?
Mr. Chair, while I'm not the association's parliamentarian, as I've been reminded numerous times, I believe that Director Just Jack's point's well taken. I would suggest that Director Flashman amend his motion to start out with move to suspend Land Use Resolution 1, and then, as it pertains to the March 11 meeting, and then do the rest of your motion, Irwin.
I shall move.
Second. Thank you, Irwin. Just wanted to get it right.
Thank you. Any discussion on this? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
This is most to the amendment of the motion.
To the amendment, aye.
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 Alright.
I cannot see everybody at the same time for some reason, but all those opposed? I hear none abstaining. Okay, so it appears to be unanimous. Am I reading this right, Brittany? It is unanimous. Thank you. Director Flashman, go ahead.
Yes.
That motion passes, of course.
Thank you. I'd like to tell you first what this motion is not about. It is not about the substance of the proposals for development of the Reston National Golf Course, nor is it about how the proposals came to be before the Land Use Advisory Committee. These items are, in my judgment, immaterial. It is about the Board understanding, undertaking a decision as to whether a presentation to LUAC on this topic is appropriate, a question which I now address. We have three essential elements in this consideration, in my judgment. The first is Board Resolution 6 on Land Use, the golf course policy, which is in existence since December 15, 2016, and it clearly states that we are in favor, that is, the Board is in favor, and Reston Association therefore is in favor of no development on the golf courses. Two, a consideration of the fact that all nine condos and clusters surrounding the Reston National Golf Course were polled with respect to this golf course, and all said no to development, in spite of the various offers made to them to entice a different response by the proponents of the development. Three, our county board supervisor Walter Alcorn has repeatedly stated that he will not support development of the RNGC as long as the neighboring clusters and condos maintain their opposition to such development. None of the foregoing circumstances have changed. Moreover, I feel certain that none of the present Board members have a burning desire to see development on the golf course. Just the opposite. They fully support the Resolution 6. Additionally, this is a matter of very high Reston Association community interest. Ordinarily, the Board would not interfere with the LUAC process. However, given the extraordinary foregoing circumstances and the understanding that it is inappropriate to provide the proponents of this development with a platform offered by RA, I feel strongly that this Board should adopt the proposed motion forthwith. I reserve the right to respond to contrary positions that may be expressed by my fellow Board members, and I hope you appreciate the short length of my presentation, which are sometimes longer.
Director Flashman, I personally appreciate
Yes.
that you kept it short to the point and with your pointed comments. I really appreciate that. Let me offer Director Perry an opportunity, since you were both behind us. Call for discussion, if she would like to speak.
Thank you. It has been longstanding. Almost every Board member present has made a public statement regarding the development of either of the golf courses in Reston. And I believe that while the Land Use Advisory Committee holds value in this particular case, just like they have previously done for other presentations, this presentation should have been a no thank you. We do not need to provide the developers of either golf course a free platform to share what they want to do to diminish the golf courses. And the reality is, the county is aware of this. The county is prepared for this. The county presentation will be available to the public. As far as making sure that our residents, our members, knew that this was coming, I think Director Farrell did a wonderful job when he made sure he cut President Mappar off at the very last meeting to make sure we all knew that this was coming, that these SSPA, the SSPA had been submitted, and the By Right had been submitted. And I thank him for making sure that all of our members were aware of it. And that is all we need to do at this time to provide the developers with a platform. So I support Director Flashman's request to end tomorrow's presentation before it even begins. Thank you.
Thank you. I see Director Dodd has got her hand up. Would you like to comment?
I would. I would like to just offer a brief response to those who suggest that we should always be willing to hear new ideas, because in fact, there is an opportunity for a public hearing and presentation of this proposal through the Fairfax County Board of Supervisors, and that is the appropriate forum for this. We are not cutting off conversation. We are just not adding an additional conversation, given that the Reston Association Board has already taken a position about the importance of our golf courses. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other of my fellow Board members who wish to comment?
Travis has his hand up.
I do.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, I apologize, Director Johnson. My screen does, I have to make sure that I capture everybody, and I'm going to change that so I can see everybody. Go ahead, go ahead.
No worries. Thank you. I'm not that great to look at in any case. I've got a face for radio. But in any case, I wanted to start off by thanking everyone involved in this, both the folks on LUAC who have put in their time and effort to put together an agenda and to work for the community's land use. work for the community's land use issues, and then also the wider community who's come out tonight to express their concerns about this issue. I appreciate all of your hard work and your energy. I've spoken to a lot of people since Friday, a lot of people since Friday, and you know, I've heard multiple sides of this. And what still sticks with me is that I have yet to hear an affirmative reason why this meeting has to happen tomorrow. We, we hear all these people, you know, talking about why development would potentially harm the community. And as leaders, our first job should be like doctors to do no harm. And I'd like to know, you know, if we're going to make a decision that the wider community sees as harming them, why? You know, what is the affirmative reason why to do it? Everything that I've heard was that the process was that they asked, we said yes, we put them on the agenda. I didn't hear a decision-making step where they asked, and then the la, the Land Use Committee made a decision as to say yes or no. And then what happens when they say yes, and what happens when they say no? Does the process mandate that we say yes every time? If so, we need to fix the process. And if the process doesn't mandate that, you know, I'd like to know what the affirmative reason other than why not we have to, 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 to host the meeting tomorrow? Because as it stands, I'm going to have to vote no, just because I don't have an affirmative reason to vote yes. And if you can provide one, I'm happy to receive it. But I just, in four days now, I have not heard one yet. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Director Johnson. Does anybody have anything else to comment on this?
I'd like to offer something if I can be recognized.
Yep, Director Santa, go ahead.
I think I'll echo what everybody else has said. You know, thank you so much for coming out, expressing your views. I've read everyone's emails in detail, and they were helpful for me to set my own worldview on this. First of all, I support the resolution regarding the golf course. And I'll even go furthermore, just to make this perfectly clear, of my position on the application. As everyone knows, I'm against lights, whether they be a Barton Hill Road on the tennis courts, or whether they be at a golf course. Therefore, the proposal to me is troublesome, and I find it insulting that the proposal hints that by somehow they will fix the deficit problem of the fall, of the, of the ball fields. And as a baseball mom, I find that just disheartening that they're positioning this as such. Secondly, the staff followed the protocol outlined in the Land Use Committee, in the Land Use Advisory Resolution as it was set up. So I think that addresses, Travis, what you're asking. Last Friday, so everyone's aware, staff received an email from Mark Looney asking to attend the Land Use Advisory Committee to discuss these applications. Per our resolution, staff scheduled it for the next committee hearing. I want the community to know that staff was just doing its job, and the committee volunteers were just following what the resolution was set up to be. For me, however, this is a bigger problem. For me, I have a bigger question. And I think we should be asking ourselves what I think some of us may be tiptoeing around, which is whether the Land Use Advisory Committee is working at all. I don't believe it is, and perhaps we should dissolve it. If this body asks to suspend the rules of the Land Use Advisory Resolutions, I caution that we're setting a precedent for this happening again. And I am not inclined to go there, because this is more about the merits of the Land Use Advisory Committee existing and the resolutions that set up that committee, and I was not here for that. So I will abstain from voting, because I would rather address the bigger question at hand. For me, this is a procedural and structural problem.
Thank you. I believe we have heard from every board member on this issue, and everybody has had at least an opportunity to express their rationale and reason for where they stand.
President Mappar, may I ask one question, please?
Please do.
Am I, it, it is my understanding that previously there was a presentation that requested to come before the Land Use Committee and was denied. Is that incorrect?
Are you asking that of me? Because I don't sit on the Land Use Committee.
Not, no, no, I'm not, Izzy. Thank you. Sorry, Director Santa. I'm asking for anyone either that sits on the Land Use Committee, which we have two here.
So let me clarify, yeah, let me, let me jump in there. Just as, as, as background for board members, and I think you all know this, but as, thus for the members. If you're not familiar, at the beginning of every board term, when the president is elected, the president has the opportunity to appoint board members to committees. So when I became president last April, I went through the process by polling everybody, getting their preferences and so on, and I assigned people, board members, based on their preferences. At the time, I also put my name on the Land Use Committee as a member. So even though I had been a member of the Land Use Committee because of the other commitments required to attend other committees and activities and so on, on my part as a president, I was not a, an active, I have not been an active member of the Land Use Committee, and I admit that I have not attended, I would say, many, many of the meetings, not because I don't want to, but because of other commitments as the president, dealing with other issues and so on. So I just want to make sure that the reason you're not hearing from me, Director Perry, is because I don't want.
I would submit that somebody in this room does know, and I would request an answer to my question, please.
President Mappar, this is Jennifer.
Director Justcheck, please, please go ahead.
I'm sorry, everyone, I had to walk away. My husband just sliced his finger open. So I did not hear the last couple of minutes. But I think based on what I just heard President Mappar say, it had something to do with the Land Use Committee rejecting previous land use request, land use requests.
Director Justcheck, let me ask Director Perry to summarize the question. Would you do that, Laurie, please? You are muted.
There we go.
Thank you.
Um, yes, Jennifer, I, I do, Director Justcheck, I do hope your husband is okay, and, and you'll, he's getting paid. My question was, it is my understanding that potentially there has been a previous request to present before the Land Use Advisory Committee, and that request was denied or canceled. Is that correct?
I believe you probably are referring to Reston Town Center North is the only one that I know that was not, did not come before the Land Use Committee. If you read Resolution One, Land Use Resolution One, it says something to the effect, where therefore it further be resolved. And that first sentence is on development and redevelopment applications. Reston Town Center North is not yet, yet a redevelopment application that has been submitted, and so that's why it came back to the board. Or why staff brought it to the board for us to decide whether we would hear it or not. The ones that we're speaking about tonight have, were submitted. And so staff, to my knowledge, followed the, the Land Use Resolution. But
I see.
All requests, all requests, to my knowledge, that have come from developers or developers' representatives that have been on development or redevelopment have come before the Land Use Committee.
Yeah, Director Perry, I also want to recognize that Bob Petrin, Mr. Petrin, is also a member of the Land Use Committee, and he's got his hand up. So, Bob, go ahead.
I agree with Jennifer. I'm not aware that as generous, Jennifer has said RTC North is still in limbo, and they are the only one that I'm aware of that may have requested a, a meeting, but it didn't take place. And both Jennifer and I have attended all the meetings of the Land Use Committee that I'm aware of.
Thank you. I hope that answers your question, Director Perry. I believe we are at a point where we need to take a vote on Director Flashman's motion. Director Flashman, just for clarity, would you mind reciting that one more time so that everybody is, is on the same page?
I move to suspend Resolution One of the Land Use Committee. And to instruct the Land Use Advisory Committee to cancel the March eleventh, two thousand twenty-five presentation on the Reston National Golf Course.
That motion was seconded by Director Perry, correct? Okay, at this point, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We have Director, just bear with me, we have Director Perry. Director. Let me scroll over to the other side. Director Johnson.
Dodd.
And Director Flashman. Yes, I've got you, Laurie. So we've got Director Perry. Tell me if I'm missing anything. I want to double check this. Director Perry, Dodd, Firewatch, Johnson, and Flashman are in the positive. Those opposed?
Aye.
We've got Director Justcheck opposing. And those abstaining?
Staying.
We have Director Santa, and we have myself as two abstaining. So that would be five.
President Mappar, just so you know, Mister Champ has his hand raised.
Yes, counsel, please.
For the purposes of clarification, I want to make sure that Director Flashman meant in his motion move to suspend Land Use Resolution One.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Your count is five, one, two.
Five, one, two, that's what I have here. So just to finalize this, the, the count is on this motion is five, one, two, and the motion passes. That, let me go back to the agenda. I believe we have covered everything on the agenda for this special meeting. And at this point, at eight minutes past eight o'clock on March tenth, two thousand twenty-five, having no other business before us, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much to all the members who joined us, and thank you for your comments, and I appreciate you being here. Please, as I said, please, please make sure you vote, and please encourage your neighbors, friends, network to vote in the.